Not to jinx anything, but the forecast is looking good for Saturday so far.
No, I can't look at the weather yet until we're closer.
This is me knocking on wood.
It's not a jinx if the meeting hasn't been opened yet.
Well, I'm about to do it. So get it all out of your system, Stephen.
Good, good plan.
All right. It's six oh two and it looks like we have quite a few folks joining on Zoom and a few on YouTube. So without any objection, I would like to open the meeting. All right then. I would like to open the 2021 annual town meeting to order in the town of Hopkinton. My name is Sarah Persino and I'm honored to be your town moderator. I would like to welcome you all to Zoom and YouTube and thank you for giving up your evening to participate in this process. I will note for the record that this meeting is being recorded and will be available on the website and the town website to watch afterward. Before we begin, I want to ask for a moment of silence to recognize those Hopkinton residents who have passed away during the last year. Thank you. I also want to take time to recognize that we are on land, which has long served as a site of meeting and exchange among indigenous peoples for thousands of years and is the home of the Western Abenaki people. The town of Hopkinton honors, recognizes and respects these people, especially the Abenaki, as the traditional stewards of the lands and waters on which we gather today. In that spirit, today we will begin by acknowledging that we need to respect and help protect the lands within our use. Now I want to recognize my predecessor, Bruce Ellsworth, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And waters on which we gather today. In that spirit, today we will begin by acknowledging that we need to respect and help protect the lands within our use. Now I want to recognize my predecessor, Bruce Ellsworth, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And waters on which we gather today. In that spirit, today we will begin by acknowledging that we need to respect and help protect the lands within our use. Now I want to recognize my predecessor, Bruce Ellsworth, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And waters on which we gather today. In that spirit, today we will begin. Neil, is everything all set?
All right. Let's try this again. I'm not sure what's going on.
Neil, is everything all set?
All right. Let's try this again. I'm not sure what's going on. Appears that when we go to the videos, which are pre-recorded, we get something from somewhere. Yeah, I don't know. I have no idea where it's coming from.
All right.
I'll try one more time and.
If not, I'll go to one of the members.
Something from somewhere. Yeah, I don't know. I have no.
All right. Well, we will go to game plan two. Jeff, I see you standing. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff's wife Kathy was supposed to sing the pledge for us, but I assume if we start the video, it will do that same very thing. And short of getting her in the room with you, Jeff, I think we might skip that and we'll try to arrange it for another time. Thank you, Bruce and Kathy for putting those videos together. I'm sorry that it didn't quite work out as planned. From here, I intend to proceed as follows. I will first introduce the select board and staff. Then I will share some administrative comments and explain the process for tonight's meeting and the rest of our remote town meeting schedule. That will be followed by a special presentation by the Chair of the Select Board, and then we'll move right into the articles on the warrant. And now for staff and select board introductions. For the select board tonight, we have Chair Sabrina Dunlap, Vice Chair Ken Trump, Stephen Whitley, Anna Wells, and Jeffrey Donahue. I also want to recognize Town Administrator Neil Cass and Town Clerk Tax Collector Carol Harless, who will be taking the minutes of this meeting. Before we proceed, I would like to thank everyone who helped develop the data and statistics that resulted in these warrant articles and those who arranged for and participated in the budget hearings, the informational hearings, the setup for today's and Thursday's meetings, and a special thanks to them and to many of you who are responsible for and contributing to next Saturday's voting at the high school. Many of you have risen to the occasion, to the occasion time and again over the past year as we have transitioned to remote town meeting procedures with drive-by voting and COVID safe elections. I want to take this moment now to recognize that work and share my sincere gratitude. And now we'll review the schedule for tonight and for the rest of the week. Packets were mailed to registered voters with the information and more in detail that I'm going to go into right now. And it's also available on the town website if you need to check there for that information. I'll go over the highlights now. Tonight I will introduce and read each warrant article. In the interest of time, I have asked the board to preassign the member who offered the motion and the second. I will announce who made and seconded the motion and then I will invite the motioner to speak to it. If a member of the Budget Committee wishes to address an appropriate motion, I will allow it. Following the presentation, I will invite comments and questions on that article. I will ask that they be limited to three minutes each and remind you that speakers must introduce themselves by name and street address. First-time speakers will be given priority over people who have already commented. And all these comments and questions will be included in the minutes of the meeting. All articles will be addressed this evening before the meeting closes. After the meeting has ended, questions, comments, and motions to amend will be accepted by telephone, voicemail, or email as noted in your packet. Please remember to start by identifying your name and street address in Hopkinton. All comments, questions, and motions will be included in the minutes of the meeting. The Select Board will not consider any comments deemed inappropriate or offensive or which do not properly identify the voter. All submissions must be made prior to 5:00 PM on Thursday, April 29th, 2021. The Select Board will review all comments, questions, and suggested amendments at the second session on Thursday. Because comments are being submitted between tonight's meeting and 5:00 PM on Thursday, no further comments will be taken at the Tuesday meeting, which begins at 6:00 PM. After the Select Board has reviewed all submissions, they will determine if any warrant article will be amended. Only the amended warrant article will go on the ballot. A sample ballot will be available on the town website by 9:00 AM on Friday morning. You are encouraged to review the ballot in advance and even print it, fill it out, and bring it with you to assist you in voting on Saturday. Official ballots will be provided when you check in. The drive-by voting will be open on Saturday, May 1st from 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM at the Hopkinton Middle High School using the Kirsage Ave entrance. Please note that the lines do tend to be the longest when the polls open right away, so you may want to choose another time to vote if possible. To protect the health and safety of voters and poll workers, please wear a mask when your vehicle window is down. The first question on the ballot will ask whether you approve of all these procedures that I've just outlined. If that question fails to pass, then no votes for any other article will be counted, and we will develop a new set of procedures and a new schedule of meetings. If passage of that article allows us to proceed, then the results will be made available on the town website as soon as they are compiled. Before we proceed, I also want to take time to note that if you are not currently registered to vote in Hopkinton, you may register at the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours at the Town Hall up until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, April 28th. There is no absentee voting or Election Day registration per town meeting. And now I'd like to introduce Select Board Chair Sabrina Dunlap for a special presentation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight, and I echo Sarah's thanks to everyone who helped put this meeting on tonight. And Neil, I think we have a slide on this presentation. I wanted to take a minute on behalf of the Select Board. I echo Sarah's thanks to everyone who helped put this meeting on. Hey, so I think some feedback issues anytime we go to the slide, so we can do this without the slide. I'll do this and then maybe we can take a minute to try to troubleshoot, but I just wanted to recognize Bruce Ellsworth for his time and dedication on the planning board. Bruce served on the planning board for 30 years and served as Chair for 28 of those years, which is really remarkable. I served as a Select Board member on the planning board, so I got to see Bruce in action. And anyone who has served with him knows he runs an excellent meeting. So Bruce just wanted to say a sincere and heartfelt thank you for your service. This town has benefited greatly from your time, energy, and dedication. I wish we were together in person so I could thank you in person, and I know you're still around, but you will be missed in your official capacity. So on behalf of the Select Board, thank you, Bruce, for everything. And we do have a plaque, but I don't know if we're going to be able to pull that up quite yet. All right. Excellent. Thank you, Neil. There's the plaque. Yes, thank you, Bruce. Hopefully we'll see you soon in person. All right. Um, that's it for me, Sarah. For now.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. And now I suggest we move ahead with the first article. As you may recall, the first article was the election of officers to choose all necessary town officers by ballot and majority vote for the ensuing year as enumerated. These elections were held back in March. So I'll go over who won those positions. For the position of Select Board Member, Stephen Whitley. For two positions for Budget Committee Member, Jonathan Cohen and Kristin Skura, Krista Skura. For two positions of Library Trustee, Amy Stone and James P. Rourke Jr. One position for Cemetery Trustee, Lynn Clark, and one position for Trustee of the Trust Funds, Christine Hoyt. Article two zoning amendments. To see what action the town will take with respect to the following proposed amendments, the Hopkinton zoning ordinance by ballot vote upon the following questions. As you may recall, there were quite a few zoning amendments. They all passed by a large margin in March. And now we're ready for the remaining articles on the warrant. Tonight we will consolidate the presentation for Articles three, four, five, and six because there are references one to another. Since you will still vote for them separately Saturday, I will allow them to be discussed together and I will read each one now. Article three, operating budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, the Budget Committee recommended sum of $7,662,087 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. The Select Board recommends this Article five to zero. The Budget Committee recommends this Article nine to zero. Article four, appropriation to capital reserve funds. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $706,000 to be added to previously established capital reserve funds as follows. Police fire radio equipment, $13,000. New and replacement equipment and vehicles for Public Works and Highway Department, $220,000. Road bridge rehabilitation, $38,000. Police vehicle replacement, $28,000. Transfer station equipment and facilities, $45,000. Replacement and equipping of ambulance, $75,000. Fire department vehicle and equipment acquisitions, $200,000. Library building systems, $10,000. Revaluation, $22,000. Recreation facilities, $20,000. And sewer equipment and sledge removal, $35,000 for the total of $706,000. The Select Board recommends this Article five to zero. The Budget Committee recommends this Article nine to zero. Article five, appropriation to expendable trust funds. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $72,500 to be added to previously established expendable trust funds as follows. For library buildings and grounds, $7,000. Town facilities maintenance, $60,000. Recreation facilities, $5,500. For a total of $72,500. The Select Board recommends this Article five to zero. The Budget Committee recommends this Article nine to zero. And finally, for now, Article six, financial software update. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $61,300 for the purpose of purchasing, installing, and training for new financial software. This sum to come from an assigned fund balance, no amount to be raised by taxation. The Select Board recommends this Article five to zero, and the Budget Committee recommends this Article nine to zero. All of those motions were moved by Ken Trump and seconded by Sabrina Dunlap and will be addressed now by Ken Trump.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. And I want to thank everyone who zoomed into this meeting for joining us. It's important that you understand what the town is proposing for 2021, and I certainly hope and expect that for this meeting next year, we'll be back at the middle high school. A year like no other. It was only on July 25th that the town's budget for calendar year 2020 was approved. And as I get into the 2021 budget and areas which have changed since 2020, I don't have to remind you that 2020 was a year like no other. Please recognize that for the 2020 budget, we were able to reduce appropriations in places because we already knew that certain things had occurred, such as the slusher centers mostly closing down or how much overtime our DPW had incurred due to road plowing and treating in the first part of the year being much lower than a more normal year. And extra expenses related to COVID were largely covered by grants. But going forward, there is still much uncertainty about 2021. With that, let me start by thanking the many individuals involved in this process. From Neil and our department heads and staff, to the many committee members, my fellow Select Board members, as well as the many wonderful volunteers in town for all of their hard work and dedication in helping developing this budget and helping to keep the town running as smoothly as it does. As you will hear in this budget proposal, we've tried to balance the legitimate needs for the town while recognizing that many of our fellow citizens continued to be stressed financially due to the pandemic. And when these articles were finalized in February, we expected to receive significantly less funding from the state government. In other words, there was still and still is a lot of uncertainty for how 2021 will unfold. With that intro, I'll start by giving an explanation of all of the items involved in the development of the property tax rate, which includes warrant articles three through six. There was a, as I explained, there was a short time between budgets. The process for developing the 2021 budget began almost before the ink was dry in the 2020 approved budget, in other words, in August. So the budget process to date, department heads prepared their budgets with the guidance to just focus on needs, not wants as much as possible. And as you will see later, they did an excellent job of trying to just maintain the pre-COVID status quo. Next, the department heads met with the town administrator to review their requests. Then the Select Board met with each department head to review and scrutinize their requests, including their capital requests and also with the Capital Improvement Committee. Then the Select Board began the hard work of trying to balance the town needs with affordability for our taxpayers. So turning to revenues side regarding non-property tax revenues forecast for 2021. Unfortunately, the projections we are using show a decrease of $47,286. But this includes an increase from sewer user fees and reimbursements from the Kentucky Village precinct. Excluding the sewer funds which are paid by the users of the sewer system, non-property tax revenues are forecast to decrease by $69,000 or to just over 2%. As far as the projected decrease, the main driver is the assumption that funds coming from the state will be declining by 20% from 2020 levels for room and meals revenue sharing as well as from the highway block grant and by 100% for municipal aid. In total, these reductions amount to $142,000, which equates to almost a 3% increase in the tax rate. These assumptions are consistent with what we understood other towns were projecting during the February timeframe. On the plus side, we're projecting a $30,000 increase in motor vehicle fees and a $10,000 increase in ambulance charge revenues. On in terms of potential future revenue sources, and this is certainly good news. In the 2020 approved budget, it was funding approved for a part-time or per diem economic development director. This 2021 budget includes a full year of funding for that position with costs shared equally with the tax increment financing districts. The Select Board has retained the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission on a per diem basis for 2021 with the expectation to encourage development and obtain grants going forward to keep our tax rate affordable in the long term. The other real positive that I want to point out is that the solar array at the transfer station and a journey, joining land in Webster is moving forward to expected annual revenues to Hopkinton of around $150,000 to $200,000, around $250,000 in 2023 or 2024. As far as the operating budget itself, which is warrant article three, the article is a, is a total proposed operating budget of $7,662,087. Reflects an increase over the 2020 final approved budget of 141,000 or 1.88%. The largest driver of the increase is the state increase in the percentage the town must pay effective July 1, 2021 for the New Hampshire retirement system, and that's almost $50,000. Moving along there, because there were fewer elections in 2021 than last year, election administration is reduced by $11,000 or 56%. We're proposing a cost of living adjustment for town employees of 1.5%, which represents an increase of $39,559. Health insurance based on a guaranteed maximum increase of 6% is just under $31,000. There would be a proposed increase for police part-time wages of $13,000, which represents an eight-hour-per-week increase in total part-time hours. Police gasoline is decreased by $5,000 primarily due to a lower estimated gas price compared to last year. Fire dispatch mutual elect board and the Budget Committee in 2020 prior to the pandemic. The improved, but the final approved budget for 2020 with this item was much lower because we knew that winter road maintenance costs had been much lower than normal due to the weather. Department of Public Works shimmying and paving was increased by 5% or $17,700 to put us back on the trajectory. Where in non-pandemic years, we've been increasing this line item by 5% in order to continue chipping away at the backlog of roadwork that needs addressing. Highway trees services was increased by $5,000 mainly due to the impact of the Emerald Ash Borra on trees in town. Trash transport and disposal was increased by $38,500 to reflect the increased price, the expected price increase per ton for removal. As an aside, we'll be looking into whether 2021 is an appropriate year to increase the rates we charge for dumping at the transfer station. Demolition tipping fees was increased by $6,000 due to a larger amount of tonnage. I'll note that we have increased the estimated revenue from commercial haulers and dump at the transfer station by $10,000 for the same reason. Equipment rental at the transfer station was increased by $6,000, recognizing that actual expense is for 2020 were considerably over budget. The Economic Development Committee Director line was increased by $16,450 to reflect the full year for this position, which was approved last summer. On the other side of the ledger, debt principal and interest is projected to decline by just under $195,000, of which principal payments will be declined by $263,000, while interest payments will increase by $68,000. This is due to a number of factors. The maturing in 2020 of the buyer Carson Rollins bond, the Myron loan, and the community well loan in combination with the refinancing of the fire station and initial road bond in early 2021, as well as the issuance of the recently approved $1.8 million road bond. I'll get into this area of activity in a little more detail when I finish this slide. The final item on this slide is an increase in the sewer department of just under $12,000, which is fully offset by revenues. The major driver here is for mandated testing. So getting on to the debt service and interest. The town at our July town meeting vote approved the $1.8 million bond. At that point, assumed issuance in early 2021 at 2.5%. The interest rate wonderfully turned out to be much lower at 0.76%. Included in this budget is $189,000 of interest expense for 2021. At the same time, we issued the new bond, we refinanced an existing road bond, which was issued in 2015 with remaining principal of $1.38 million. $124,000 in principal and interest for 2021 is included in this budget. By refinancing in early 21 at 0.76% versus the original 2.5%, we've saved almost $69,000 in interest over the remaining life of the bond. And finally, the existing fire station bond, which was issued in 2014, had a remaining principal of $261,000. And by similarly refinancing it in early 2021 at 0.76% versus the original 3.15%, we saved $231,000 in interest over the remaining life of the bond. Moving on to capital reserves and maintenance trust funds. The total the Select Board is proposing to put into capital reserves warrant article five and maintenance trust funds warrant article six are $706,000 and $72,500 respectively, totaling $778,500 or a $30,500 increase over 2020. The major drivers are, excuse me, I need a drink. Fire department vehicles and equipment is declining by $62,500 to $200,000 primarily because we purchased, purchased a $600,000 plus fire engine in 2020. Public Works vehicle and equipment is increasing by $20,000 to $220,000. So we can purchase a backhoe and small dump truck in 2021 for an estimated $260,000. Transfer station capital reserve fund is increasing from 0 to 45,000. So we can replace trailer one for about $52,500. Revaluation is increasing from 0 to 22,000 as we're starting to set aside funds for our next townwide revaluation in 2025. Library facilities maintenance trust is decreasing by $34,000 from $41,000 to $7,000 because in 2020, we set aside funds for painting the inside and outside of the building as well as other future projects. The final major change is to the town facilities maintenance trust for a $35,000 increase to $60,000. This is in order to fund the Houston Bond roof repairs over two years. Okay, moving on to the individual warrant article, which is Article six. Warrant article six is a $61,300 item, which would be funded out of the December 31, 2020 fund balance and will be used to purchase and install modern financial software to replace the software that is about 13 years old. No amount to be raised from taxation. The, what the financial software will provide, the current software is supported but not updated. The new system will provide substantially more ability to obtain detailed information efficiencies efficiently. It includes a reconciliation module as well as a budget module, thus saving a substantial amount of time for both areas. It would be integrated with the Department of, New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration forms, providing the correct information easily. It includes full integration of ACH payments, which is not part of the current software, and it is web-based, thus providing for added assurance of continuation of service. Okay, use of the fund balance. We're proposing to use $421,000. Use of the fund balance, we're proposing to use four hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars from the fund balance. Which is seventy-one thousand, three hundred or twenty point four percent increase over what was used in twenty twenty. Three hundred and sixty thousand would be used to offset the operating budget, while sixty-one thousand, three hundred will be used for the financial software. Please remember that the fund balance offsets the amounts needed to be raised by taxes. With that, let me remind you about what the unreserved fund balance is. It is funds remaining in the budget after all obligations have been met. That is not committed for other purposes and can be allocated in the upcoming budget or returned to reduce taxes. The New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration recommends an unreserved fund balance of at least five percent of all taxes committed. That five percent goes for not just the town, but also the schools, county and precincts. As the town is the entity who sends out the bills and collects payments. This five percent would cover issues like cash flow and emergencies. At this time, we're estimating that the unreserved fund balance as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty will be two million, sixty-one thousand. Reducing that by the five percent retainage estimate of a million, three hundred and fourteen thousand. Leaves an estimated seven hundred and forty-six thousand, six oh five available. We are proposing to use four hundred and twenty-one thousand in twenty twenty-one. Leaving an estimated minimum of three hundred and twenty-five thousand for use in twenty twenty-two. I'll stress the word minimal as we're hoping the state will come through with additional funding. As we are assuming receiving a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars less than twenty twenty-one than twenty twenty. And in general, we will receive more revenue in other areas than we are budgeting for, as well as lower expenses than. Budgeted for in twenty twenty-one. For instance, in twenty twenty. We're as we're estimating that actual expenses will be at least a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars below budget. If if as you will remember at the twenty twenty-one town meeting. The exemption levels for low-income elderly, solar and disabled veterans were increased. While the select board strongly supported the increases and continues to. This slide shows that the increased exemptions resulted in those eligible individuals. Saving about twenty-five thousand dollars off of the town portion of their tax bills. Since since this amount has to be recovered, it resulted in over half a percent increase in the town tax rate with a similar impact with school rate. This page shows all of the items impacting the proposed tax rate as I explained. Resulting in an increase of four point six three percent or twenty-nine cents per thousand to six dollars and fifty-four cents. We have assumed a half a percent increase in the townwide valuation. Consistent with the budget committee's recommendation due to recent historical trends. And the volume of new construction and renovations during the pandemic. This slide again shows the the change to the to twenty-nine cents and four point six three percent. This slides. Since articles three through six were unanimously unanimously adopted by the budget committee and select board. I've been asked about any updates due to the American Rescue Plan and state budget. With the American Rescue Plan, the town expects to receive about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. From the plan over twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, which we will have until twenty twenty-four to expend. But since we don't have any firm guidance on how the firm funds can be spent, we haven't included any here. We will keep voters up to date on on this as we receive more information. Since the adoption of the proposed budget and revenue assumptions. We have been following developments with the New Hampshire state budget as it relates to funding for women, meals, tax. Revenues and highway block grants going to the towns. As you will recall, we've assumed we would receive eighty percent of the amounts we received this year. At this time, since this final state budget is months away. We've stuck to the assumptions we and the budget committee had previously used. But I will add that as we have followed developments of the state budget, we are hopeful. That we will receive a hundred percent of those amounts, which would mean the tax increase would be two point six three percent, not four point six three percent. The tax rate is formally set by the State Department of Revenue Administration in the fall. At that time, they will know what the actual amounts are as well as the updated town valuation number and. Would incorporate such. So with that, I've finished with that presentation. I'll turn it back to Sarah.
Great, thank you, Ken. Neil, did anyone from the budget committee want to speak to any of those articles?
No one has their hand raised.
Okay, do we?
I don't see Mark on.
I'll just know, I'll just note that the budget committee did unanimously approve all of those articles.
Correct. Neil, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Has anyone raised their hands?
There are no hands raised.
All right. If anyone wants to comment, raise your hand.
Here is one, Steve Adams.
All right, Steve, you are going to be unmuted. Could you please just state your name and street address for the record?
It's Renee Adams, six ninety-one Kearsarch Ave. And I had I had a comment. It's okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I have a comment on two things. Um, on bridges. I wondered if it's, and you might not know, but is it likely? That part of the infrastructure jobs plan, which has a lot of money for bridges. Will come to towns this size to help with bridge repair. Will we get some of that money?
Ken, do you want to respond to that?
I I would say certainly, hopefully, but I I can't say definitively. I don't have any information like that. We are, as part of the the recent bond that had been approved last summer. We will be starting work on the Raoul Bridge if that was the one you're particularly concerned about.
Uh, any bridge I'm concerned about.
Just just crush your fingers after you're.
Right. My other my other question is just kind of a confused one on the the transfer station. I think many of us are confused with what's going on with recycling, with money from recycling, with the transfer station. Anybody's transfer station in the state. And when I see that we need to spend forty-five thousand to help with transfer station. Is there any money that we're making that goes into it? I mean, detail may be in here that I I missed, but. I'm confused with whether any money is being made actually on what we as citizens are doing at the transfer station. And with our bags and the whole thing.
Okay, any any revenue that we receive is is used to offset costs. Certainly, as far as the green bags, the revenue received from green bags, net of the cost of the bag. Is used a hundred percent just to offset Hopkins' costs. Webster doesn't receive any benefit from those bags.
And with the the recycling, is there anything that's making money on recycling?
I would have to defer to Neil. I'm not sure of the answer.
Sure, in twenty twenty, we took in just about twenty-eight thousand dollars in recycling revenue. That is certainly down.
That's way down, right?
From from, it's about half of what we took in in two thousand seventeen. The market, as you've heard statewide and countrywide, worldwide is not what it was, certainly.
So we're putting more money in as a town for whenever anything comes up with the transfer station than at this point. Thank you, okay.
Renee, does that conclude your comment?
Yes, thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Can I just make one clarification? Ken mentioned that we were working on the Raoul Bridge. It's actually the Tyler Bridge. That comes under that recent bond, I believe.
The bridge on Penderco Street.
Yeah, just wanted to correct the record on.
Thank you for the correction.
Great. Neil, do we have anyone else with their hand raised?
No hands raised at the moment.
All right. There's no one else with public comment on those articles? Three, four, five, six, then we will move on to seven. Just double checking one more time, Neil, that no one has raised their hand.
No hands, and the hand button should be at the bottom of their screens if you want, and I don't see anyone on the phone, so.
Okay, great. Then we will move on to article seven. Authorization to rent the Bates Building to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into an agreement to lease all or a portion of the Bates Building. Or a period exceeding one year under such terms and conditions as determined by the select board to be in the best interest of the town. The select board recommends this article five to zero. The motion was made by Sabrina Dunlap and seconded by Stephen Whitley. And I will recognize Sabrina Dunlap to speak to her motion.
Thank you. So um, this is merely allowing the town to enter into more than a month-to-month lease. Because we did put the question before the town the last two years to authorize us to sell the Bates Building and that did not go through. So we're pretty limited in what we can do with the building and so under state law, we need authorization from the town to enter into. A longer-term lease. So that is what this is asking the town to do. This doesn't get into who will be in the building or anything else about the building's use. It's just authorizing us to enter into something longer than a month-to-month lease.
That conclude your comments, Rena?
Thanks.
And so if there are any public comments, questions, I will entertain those now. Just raise your hand using the button at the bottom.
And actually, I should just add while we give people a chance to raise their hand that. If we are authorized, we still have to go through a process to determine who will be a tenant and move forward with the process from here. So again, this is a pretty limited ask here.
Neil, do we have anyone who's raised their hands?
We do. Elizabeth McCann.
All right, could you introduce yourself with your name and address for the record, please?
Neil, you know my name by now. This is Alyssa McCann at five nineteen Crowell Road. I was just calling to say that I am as the current tenant of the Bates Building. In strong support of folks voting yes, voting yes, let's, whether it's us or another tenant, set up a. Long-term situation to invest in ourselves and the building. And so just putting it out there that as the current tenant, we're really hoping the town votes yes on this warrant.
Great, thank you, Alyssa. Neil, do we have anyone else?
There are no other hands at the moment.
All right, we'll give you another minute while I scroll to article eight. Just a final check, Neil. Anyone else on article seven?
No, none on article seven.
All right, move on to article eight. Authorization to sell land at corner of Courier and Beach Hill Roads. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to sell land located at the corner of Courier Road and Beach Hill Road. A portion of which is identified on the town tax records as map two fifty-nine, lot zero two four dash zero zero zero. And a portion of which is the old road consisting of approximately approximately point three three acres, but I think that should say approximately. Further, that the select board shall be authorized to sell such lot upon such terms and conditions which they deem to be in the best interest of the town. The select board recommends this article five to zero. The budget committee recommends this article nine to zero. The motion is made by Jeff Donahue and seconded by Anna Wells, and I will recognize Jeff to speak to his motion.
Yeah, this is, oh, thanks, Neil. If you can see, there's a there's the red triangle, which is the subject of this article, and within that, there's a smaller triangle. That was a sort of a traffic island, if you will, in the middle of where Courier Road split when the intersection was realigned. That piece really became unnecessary or unneeded. So this combines the portion of the old road and the lot into a single lot to be sold by the town. Because candidly, we don't need it.
Does that conclude your remarks, Jeff? Great.
Yes, thank you.
If there are any public comments or questions regarding article eight, I would entertain those now.
Mark Zankel.
Hi, good evening. Mark Zankel, forty-five Crowell Road. I just have a. A question for Ken, which is, I'm, I think. You said, or it was that the budget committee voted to support this, and I just, I don't actually remember this one. Come to the budget committee, so I just wanted to see if you could confirm that. That actually came to the budget committee, or if it didn't, you might want to just edit that.
Neil, do you have that?
Yes, this didn't go to budget committee.
Okay, then I rescind that, which I read from script. Thank you for the clarification, Mark.
Great, thank you.
Neil, are there any other public comments?
Yes, Joanne DeBolt.
All right, Joanne, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, my name is Joanne DeBolt. I live at nine six six Rollins Road. And I just was wondering, is that slice of land between Courier Road and the Beach Hill School?
Jeff, do you want to respond?
I believe that's correct, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Neil, do we have anyone else?
No other hands are raised.
All right, seeing no more public comments, we will move on to article nine. Authorization to expand from pay-by-bag special revenue fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of offsetting the cost of collection and disposal of residential solid waste. And such other direct costs is budgeted annually with said funds to come from the pay-by-bag special revenue fund. No funds to be raised by taxation. The select board recommends this article five to zero, and I'm reading here, the budget committee recommends this article nine to zero, and just double checking, Neil, that is still. The motion was made by Anna Wells, seconded by Stephen Whitley, and I'll recognize Anna to speak to her motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article is probably very familiar to people by now. As always, it authorizes existing monies in the pay-by-bag special revenue fund. To be used to offset expenses associated with the operation of the transfer station. That concludes my remarks.
Brilliant. Are there any budget committee members that wanted to speak to this, Neil? Any public comment or questions? Someone have their hand raised?
No hands are raised.
All right. Seeing no public comment, we will move on to article ten then. Authorization to expand from senior center rental special fund, special revenue fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars for the purpose of offsetting operational and maintenance costs of the Suster Center. With said funds to come from the senior center rental special revenue fund. No funds to be raised by taxation. The select board recommends this article five to zero. The budget committee recommends this article nine to zero. The motion was made by Anna Wells and seconded by Stephen Whitley, and I will recognize Anna to speak to her motion.
Thank you again, Madam Moderator. And again, this article is probably very familiar. This vote would authorize existing monies in the senior center rental special revenue fund to be used to offset costs to operate and maintain the Suster Center. That concludes my comment.
Brilliant, thank you, Anna. Neil, did any members of the budget committee wish to speak to this?
They did not.
Great. Have any members of the public raise their hands?
Not at this time.
All right, I will give you a minute while I scroll to the next article. Let me know if anyone pops up. Any hands, Neil?
No hands.
All right, then we will move on to article eleven. A resolution for nonpartisan fair redistricting article. I will note that this is a petition warrant article. It reads, because redistricting has often been used to gerrymander unfairly draw partisan. Districts based on partisan considerations by petition of twenty-five or more eligible voters of the town of Hopkinton to see if the town will vote to urge. That the New Hampshire General Court, which is obligated to redraw the maps of political districts within the state following the federal census. Will ensure fair and effective representation of New Hampshire voters without gerrymandering. Additionally, these voters asked the town of Hopkinton to urge the New Hampshire General Court. To carry out the redistricting in a fair and transparent way through public meetings, not to favor a particular political party. To include communities of interest and to minimize multi-seat districts. Furthermore, as the New Hampshire State Constitution, Part Two, Article Eleven allows towns of sufficient population to have their own. Furthermore, as the New Hampshire State Constitution, Part Two, Article Eleven, allows towns of sufficient population to have their own state representatives, not shared with other towns, for the town of Hopkinton to petition the New Hampshire General Court for its own exclusive seat or seats in the New Hampshire House of Representatives, ensuring that state representatives properly represent the town's interests. The record of the vote approving this article shall be transmitted by written notice from the Select Board to Hopkinton State Legislators, informing them of the request from their constituents within 30 days of the vote. This is a petition warrant article, and the Select Board recommends this Article Five to Zero. The motion is made by Caitlin Brollo and seconded by Sabrina Dunlap, and I will recognize Caitlin to speak to her motion. Caitlin, when you come on, just please state your name and then your address for the record.
All right. Hello?
You are live.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, for the record, my name is Caitlin Brollo, and I live at 1998 Hopkinton Road. And real quickly, this warrant article is a volunteer-driven petition that was brought forth by more than 25 residents in this community, and they're popping up all across the state, actually, and over 100 communities have voted on to move this. What we're looking for is a non-binding resolution to be sent to our state-elected officials by our select board, as well as the voters requesting uh, that the redistricting that will start really soon at our state level will be fair and transparent as they draw their new legislative maps on the state and federal level, that the maps not be drawn with any favoritism to one political party or another, that the mapping process happen in public meetings, um, and be done prior to and after, so that there can be as much public input as possible. This was, um, an area 10 years ago where, uh, from my own personal experience, there was not a lot of public input that was put in. And in fact, uh, the maps were actually drawn and brought forward in one case with less than 24 hours. And I was actually one of the only residents to actually go to one of the hearings. So I feel very passionately that, you know, the voters all across the state should have an opportunity, just like we're seeing with all these town meetings and school district meetings. Zoom has provided a great opportunity for folks to be engaged, to know and understand what's happening, not only in local politics, but on the state level. Additionally, this warrant asks for towns that have 3,300 citizens or larger be given their own state rep districts. A lot of this goes to a constitutional amendment that was passed actually by the state voters overwhelmingly in 2006, that districts be as small as possible so that we can have as most, the most representation needed. And then, um, the last little bit is that the Select Board will communicate this in writing to our, uh, town and state and federal delegations. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Caitlin. Did any members of the Select Board wish to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, Neil, let's open it up to public comment. Were there any hands raised?
Yes. The first one is Janet Ward.
All right, Janet, you are good to go. Just state your address for the record, please.
Uh, I'm Janet Ward from, uh, 82 Watchtower Road, and, um, I support this article because it's simple common sense. Uh, to allow, uh, folks to manipulate, uh, redistricting behind closed doors offers a lot of opportunity for mischief. This, uh, article simply says, have the redistricting happen openly and above board and with public, uh, input and, uh, participation. And, um, as Caitlin said, these, um, petition articles are appearing on town warrants across the state of New Hampshire um, and have been improved, approved by 50 of them. It is simple common sense to have something as important as redistricting happen, um, in full view of all of us, the voting public and citizens of the state of New Hampshire. And so I, uh, very much support, uh, approval of this article.
Thank you for your comment, Janet. Neil, do we have anyone else?
We do. I think it's Renee Adams, if I remember right.
I will not guess, but whoever is S. Adams, you are good to go. Just take your name and.
Thanks. It's Renee Adams, 691 Kearsarge. I'd just like to thank the Caitlin, the other volunteers, and I'm with Janet. Um, I believe that the legislature, legislature voted down having a third, uh, party-neutral, uh, group do this. But I, I think, uh, whether it's done by the Republicans or the Democrats, and they both do it, it's undemocratic. And it, I think our town meeting is so democratic, and we need to continue that same spirit in New Hampshire. So I'd like people to vote yes for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Neil, do we have any other public comment on this one?
There are no other hands raised at the moment.
All right.
Here is, here's another one. It's Bob Wells.
All right. If you could just state your name and address for the record, Bob?
Bob Wells at 114 Moran Road. I think Janet Ward, uh, expressed it extremely well. That is very important that we have an objective approach to the redistricting to avoid issues that we are now seeing nationally, where redistricting is being used to favor one party over another. So I strongly support this particular article.
Great. Thank you for your comment, Bob. Neil, is there anyone else left?
There are no other hands raised.
All right. Seeing none, then we can move on to Article Twelve, Adoption of Official Ballot Referendum Form of Meeting. I will note this too is a petition warrant article. It reads, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40:13, known as SB2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the town of Hopkinton on the second Tuesday of March? A three-fifth ballot vote is required for this article, and the Select Board does not recommend this Article Five to Zero. Neil, do we have any of the petitioners on the call to present tonight?
Not that I am aware of. They can raise their hand if they are.
I'll give them a minute to see if there's anyone on. Oh, seeing that there are no petitioners on to present this, I will recognize Stephen Whitley to speak on behalf of the Select Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There's some slides for this, which I'm just gonna wait until they get queued up here. Great. So I'm not gonna read all this, uh, because some of this is familiar, uh, and I also want to keep this kind of brief. The Select Board held a public hearing on April 12th. Uh, we voted, um, not to support this petitioned article. Uh, you can go to the next one, Neil. So what is the SB2 form of town meeting? Uh, if it passes, Hopkinton will become an official ballot community and have to follow RSA 40:13 for town meetings going forward. That splits up the town meeting, um, into two sessions. There's the deliberative session first, and then the voting session. Uh, by law, those are held about five weeks apart. The, uh, first session, the deliberative, is for the explanation, discussion, and amendments to the proposed operating budget and the other warrant articles. Uh, the second session is where we all get together and vote. Uh, that voting session is just an up or down, a yes or no vote. Uh, there's no more discussion or changing of the articles. Go to the next one, Neil, please. Uh, so how does this compare to what we're doing already? Uh, so the first session is probably the most similar to what we're familiar with. Uh, that's when everyone gets together, um, you know, COVID notwithstanding, and debates and makes motions to amend and, and do those sort of kind of, uh, traditional town meeting things, but you don't actually vote after that discussion. All you're doing is, uh, deciding on the final wording, uh, and then you wait to vote, uh, until the voting session, which, as I mentioned, is about five weeks later. Uh, and that voting session is held on the same day that we hold elections. So the same day you show up, you vote, uh, by official ballot, uh, for both, uh, all of the election, uh, offices that are up, zoning amendments, and then on all the warrant articles as they were amended at this first session. Uh, you can get absentee ballots for the voting session in March. Uh, that is a difference. Uh, if the operating budget does not pass, and again, it's an up or down vote, uh, then it's possible that we would be using the default budget. The, flip, Neil. The default budget, uh, is defined by state law. Um, but it's, it's the previous years, uh, plus or minus debt service, contracts, other obligations previously incurred, and then any reductions for one-time expenses, expenses and salaries and benefits for eliminated positions. Uh, the default budget is calculated by the Select Board as the governing body. Uh, and it is possible to have multiple years in a row of the default budget. If the operating budget does not get passed, uh, the Select Board is not obligated to use the default budget. Uh, we could choose to call a special meeting, basically another town meeting, uh, to consider only the operating budget, uh, once more. Uh, so, uh, why did we vote against, uh, this petitioned article? There were a couple of reasons. Um, one, um, it's our sense that, uh, there's much, much lower turnout uh, and participation at the deliberative sessions. Uh, people simply choose not to attend that part of it, and they only show up to vote five weeks, five weeks later. Um, other towns that have adopted SB2, uh, they, they almost universally say that the turnout goes down. And, uh, far lower than what, uh, Hopkinton, what we turn out for our traditional meeting. With vote, lower turnout and the break between the deliberative and the voting session, uh, there would be less debate, uh, among the voters, uh, and we believe there would be less informed voters who are casting their votes. So it's not the democratic, democratic process, uh, that we, we think of and, and that we aspire to. Um, the other reason we oppose is that when you have a deliberative session where not many people show up typically, uh, you ha, can have small groups of voters making very drastic changes, uh, to the warrant articles. Uh, and then once deliberative session has concluded, uh, and everybody shows up in March to cast their votes, they don't have the ability to, um, make further changes, uh, or to persuade, uh, some of their fellow voters, uh, to not vote, um, for the, the proposed amendments. You're stuck with the yes or no choice. Uh, there, we also had concerns about what happens if we have to use a default budget. Uh, it is possible that, uh, the default budget can be higher than the operating budget that's proposed. Um, and so, uh, that's something that we would want to avoid, because again, you're not, you're not talking through the operating budget, uh, and then, you know, making amendments and then voting on it. Um, it's split up. Uh, that discussion happens at the deliberative session, and then we have to wait to vote, uh, until five weeks later. If the, this petition is intended to get at, you know, lack of access uh, for elderly residents or those with disabilities. Um, unfortunately, those, those issues don't go away for the deliberative session. Uh, they would remain. Um, and, you know, if, if there is someone out there with a disability or, or concern over access, um, you know, we would ask that you guys get in touch with us, uh, and we will do our best to make an accommodation so that you can participate, because that's what we want, is for, um, the most people to be able to participate. Um, and that, you know, changing the way we conduct our town meeting is maybe not the best way, um, to, to get that, uh, improved access. Um, if the, this petition is really about, uh, people not liking when we hold the business session right now, um, and maybe, maybe a point of clarification. So now we, we have two days as part of our town meeting. You know, we have the voting day on the Tuesday, and then the Select Board picks when we're gonna do the, what we call the business session, which is, um, all the warrant articles other than, um, voting by election and zoning amendments and those sorts of things. Um, so those are split up right now. Uh, but we have the ability, the Select Board has the ability to set when that business session takes place. Uh, and we've been doing it on Saturdays. Uh, and if the, the purpose, um, or the idea behind this petition is because people don't like, uh, when we've been setting, uh, the business session, uh, you know, come and talk to us, uh, and we'll see if there's a better day. Um, but, you know, we don't think that this is the way to, um, to get that sort of a change. Uh, so with that, that's, that's all I have, uh, unless there are any, any questions or comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Did any other member of the Select Board wish to speak to this before I go to public comment?
Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment because I find the wording of this awkward. So I just wanted to clarify that we voted affirmatively to say that we do not support SB2. So if you wanted to support SB2, you would vote yes. If you agree with the Select Board, um, in not supporting SB2, you would vote no. Just wanted to clarify that, because I always find the wording, um, a little bit confusing.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification. Neil, do we have any members of the public who raised their hands?
We do.
Great. Who's up first?
Andrew.
All right, Andrew, when you speak, can you just identify your name and your street address for the record, please?
Hi, my name's Andrew. I'm at 60 Upper Straw Road.
And your last name, please, Andrew. Andrew, can you just add your, um, last name and then you're good to comment?
Um, I just wanted to say, with all due respect, uninformed voters are still entitled to a vote, and SB2 allows for more democracy and a more input from town residents. And usually I work during, uh, town meetings, and I still want my voice to be able to count.
Great. Thank you for your comment, Andrew. Neil, do we have anyone else?
We do not. Nope, here we come. I think it's Renee Adams.
All right. And again, just your name and street address for the record, please.
Okay, this time it's Steve Adams, 691 Kearsarge Avenue. Okay, uh, rather than, uh, go on for a long period of time, I just want to say, I would, if I was going to say anything, I would say everything that the, uh, Steve Whitley has just recounted, uh, to everyone, uh, and agree with the board's position on this. I think it's a bad idea for the town. Uh, I understand some of the challenges some people may feel that they have, but I say that, uh, with all the comments that you, the board has put forward, uh, all I need to say is I strongly, uh, recommend that everybody votes no on this particular issue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comment. Neil, has anyone else raised their hand?
There are no other hands raised.
All right. Give them one more minute as I scroll to the next article. Still no hands, Neil?
No hands.
Okay. Well, seeing no more public comment, I will move to Article 13, Other Legal Business, to transact any other business that may legally come before said meeting. Does anyone have other business for this meeting? Neil, has anyone raised their hand?
There are no hands raised.
All right. Seeing no other business and no other public comments, I will wrap this up. I want to thank everyone for their participation this evening and remind you all that you can submit your questions, comments, and motions to amend by telephone, voicemail, or email before 5:00 PM on Thursday, April 29th. Please remember to identify your name and street address. Our next virtual session will be held on Thursday, April 29th at 6:00 PM. No further comments will be taken at that time. After the Select Board finalizes the warrant articles, a sample ballot will be posted on the town website by 9:00 AM on Friday, April 30th. Drive-by voting will be held on Saturday, May 1st, from 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM at the Hopkinton Middle High School via the Kearsarge Ave entrance. If possible, I do suggest choosing a time other than right at 8:30 to vote, since that's when the lines tend to form up. And to protect the health and safety of voters and poll workers, just another reminder to please wear your mask when your vehicle window is down. For additional information, you can visit the town of Hopkinton website. And again, thank you all for participating this evening. I hope to see you on Thursday.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you. Yes, thank you all.
Thank you, everyone who joined us.
Good night.
Bye.